Okay, I have 7:30. Actually, I see it's 7:33 on this screen, but my watch says 7:30. So I'm gonna call this meeting to order. I just want to remind everybody that it is recorded. We have our selectmen here. I see John Board. He is a guest here tonight. And let's see, Kim Pukrika Albert signed on. So our Board of Selectmen, John, is myself, Barbara Henry. Russ Dorenzo is the selectman and Jim Conway. And Julie Katie is our fabulous clerk.
And where's, I agree with that, but where's John from?
John, you can, well, you can go ahead, John. You know what? We're gonna, we're gonna start because I know you're in a hurry. And when we come to that, because I want to put this on the agenda. Then I'll let you know if that's okay.
Yeah, no worries. Whenever you want, Barbara.
I just want to get going because I only have Russ for a short period of time. So first of all, I'm calling the meeting to order. We have approval of the minutes. The regular meeting minutes of August 18th. And the emergency minutes of August 24th. And I did send you all a packet with everything this time because there's some other things I want to talk about.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the regular meeting from August 18th.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we have the emergency meeting.
Jim, you'll have to do that because I wasn't there.
You weren't there. I will move to accept the minutes of the emergency meeting held August 18th, 2020.
I'll second that. I don't have any discussion. It was mostly about our steep grant application. So all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, before we go on any further, what I'd like to do is add a couple of items under other business. One is we have to set a town meeting date to move the money that the Board of Finance approved. It was $60,000 out of the Public Works Department into the county road fund. And we have to get that approved at that town meeting.
Excuse me, Barbara, but I got another set of minutes. Do we have to approve the August 18th?
No, we did that, yeah.
In October?
Twenty-fourth.
Right, August twenty-fourth.
Russ did that, and then you did the second one.
Okay, gotcha.
So I'm gonna, so I'd like, okay, that. Two, approval of the Equality Act. Three, approve the update of the Plan of Conservation and Development. And those three things, if I could have a motion to add those to the agenda.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So I have the, we have the Tax Collectors Report is next. You had that in your packet for the total dollars of $3,582.62.
Move to accept.
Second.
Any discussion? These are just requests for refunds of property taxes. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Um, all right, so I think what we're gonna do is we're gonna jump down to the three things that I wanted to talk about real quick. And then I want to definitely get in Cardinal Engineering before Russ has to leave. So the first thing is, is that we need to schedule this town meeting. Do you, you guys care what that is? I can set that up. We can do it via Zoom. I don't think it's gonna be a packed house.
Yeah, we should do Zoom. COVID's going up.
No, we, we, we really have to anyway.
Yeah.
All right, so, um, let me just look at, let me just pick a date, okay? We could do it before the Board of Finance meeting, which is on the 20th.
I'm good.
Yeah.
Okay, I'll do it then.
When's the 20th? Never mind.
All right, so that's gonna be that. Okay, the Equality Act. I emailed you guys something. And actually, I don't know, Julie, just John, John, why don't you introduce yourself?
Yeah, sure. Thanks for selecting, woman. Good to see you as always, members of the board. Good to see you as well. My name's John Board. I currently chair New Britain Pride, which is the city of New Britain's LGBTQ outreach organization. But I'm doing this separately, as outside of my duties as that. So the Equality Act was a piece of legislation that was actually passed in Congress in 2019. It had bipartisan support in the House. Everyone from Elise Stefanic, who's one of the president's biggest supporters, all the way to AOC, voted in favor of this. It's been, it has been put on the calendar on the, in the Senate. What this legislation would do is it would amend the Civil Rights Act to prohibit discrimination in all different forms of life everywhere, ranging from employment, housing, public accommodations, federal funding, credit, the jury system, et cetera. Some of you maybe, I'll sort preempt some of your questions since I've been doing this for 10 times thus far, all over the state. Some of, some of you may be wondering, why is this even necessary?
No, no, John, it's necessary. And we in Roxbury have never discriminated against anybody. And we do have a large gay population, which I have a lot of gay friends, as Barbara and Jim do, because we're all friends here. So I totally support what you're doing. Where are you from?
So, so I grew up in Redding. I grew up in Redding. My mom's from England, my dad's from Wales.
Oh, I figured you got that accent. You're not from Roxbury.
I got a little, little English accent.
Absolutely support what you want to do. I know Barbara and Jim do. We're, we're a great town. We really are.
I will say, one of, I've had the opportunity to visit your town several times. I know Barbara and I have known each other for a little bit of time as well. And I've always, I've always liked your town a lot. And your town has always been in my top 10 as I visit the state. So I love, I love it down there.
So I hear, I hear what you're saying. And, and I have to get to a wetland meeting in Bridgewater because, because I, so I'm gonna make a motion to approve this overwhelmingly. I support this absolutely.
It's an Equality Act resolution. And John, I will get you what our final thing is here. And, you know, as I, as I mentioned, you know what? Roxbury's just always tried to promote justice and the promise of equality, which is, we live by that. And we're an equal opportunity employer, and there is just no discrimination. However, so I'm not afraid to put this in writing. And I will, I will email this to you right after this meeting.
That'd be great. The other thing, the only other thing that I would ask, you know, I've followed up with other municipal CEOs about this, is also take the opportunity to send a copy of the resolution with a letter to your congressional delegation so that it can be put in the record of support. When you guys ask this this evening, if my memory serves me correctly, you guys will become the ninth municipality to adopt this statewide with, I'm currently in talks with about 25 others right now, and I've emailed every municipal CEO.
Why is, why isn't it 169?
Hey. I will say.
They'll get there, John. They'll get there.
I didn't say which municipalities, but three municipalities have said no to me thus far.
Wow. Hope they're Democrat.
It's the law anyway. So, anyway, good luck in your, I will, you know, in your endeavors. And I will email you this after this meeting and show you what we, what our final was, okay? Because they have it in front of them.
All right. Thank you so much for selecting, woman. Thank you, Board of Selectmen. And Barbara, we'll talk soon, all right?
Okay, you're good. Thanks, John.
Bye.
I think I made a motion.
I'm sorry, you made a motion.
Make a motion. We need a second.
Yeah.
Jim, second. I think we have finished the discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Overwhelming, yeah.
All right.
By the way, that always used to happen in Redding, that we'd get so far into a debate or a discussion, and the board would just say, hey, did we vote on this?
So we're not the only ones, John. Okay, good.
Not at all, not at all. Have a good evening, guys.
All right, take care. Thank you. Okay, we have, somebody joined us, 508-954-4792. Hello? Anybody want to say who they are, maybe? Just, just want to welcome you. No? Telephone number 508. Okay. All right, moving along, Plan of Conservation and Development. The Roxbury Planning Commission, I put this out there to you amended. They voted to amend the town's plan of conservation and development, which was adopted on February 13th. And they want to add the following sentence, "To continue to implement the Public Act 490 Open Space Taxation Policy from the 210 Town Plan to apply to any property that is residentially zoned and is more than two times the required lot size in that zone. For that portion of the property that exceeds the required lot size in that zone, and not for any property that is used for business or utility purposes." And so they are looking for approval.
I absolutely support this. It keeps land vacant. And it, it helps landowners not pay high taxes. And they have to keep the land vacant for 10 years. It's not like they could go in and, and use this. So Jim, I don't know your feelings, but.
I'm all for it. I've used it already. We built in 1990, and I've already used it.
Good for you. So you, you have to abstain. I'll make a motion to approve this overwhelmingly. And thank you to Peter and the Planning Commission for bringing this forward.
Second?
Second.
Okay, no more discussion because it was in the plan. It probably should have been in the plan. It was overlooked. And they have to go to a town meeting, I believe. Also, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so moving, okay, we got those three things. So I said we were gonna jump around. I want to go back to Cardinal Engineering. I sent you some things. We had asked them to look at the six bridges. I sent you all of the information that they gathered on those. We have, we have a bill here for $9,000, which we knew it was $1,500 apiece. And I'd like to get approval for that, and then just.
I make a motion to approve to pay Cardinal the $9,000 bill, which was previously approved.
Yep.
Second, that work, work has been done.
Yep. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so now, we have step by step what is wrong with all of these bridges. And they're really just things that we, they're, they're smaller repairs right now. They all have a dollar amount to them. The largest one is Wellers Bridge Road over the Chippag River. And I need to go back into when we redid the decking on that because he's got a $200,000 price tag. And it would only be $200,000 if the underside, that I remember having to pick a color for, so I'm sure they took that off, is lead paint. So I'm sure that they didn't put lead paint back on it. But if it is not lead paint.
There's no way because lead paint was banned in 1973. There's no way, yeah.
So if it is not lead paint, he said the cost is gonna come down.
Well, why would he assume?
He just, because he's giving us the high, the high end of everything.
Yeah, I understood. Okay.
Okay, so then you see Minor Bridge Road, which is the, the large bridge. These are all the large federal bridges. And the estimated rehab cost is $20,000. Then South Street over Little Jack's Brook. These are all estimates, $30,000 to get all of that done. River Road over Little Jack's Brook, there's not a whole lot. That bridge isn't very old, but it does need a little bit of repair work. And he's saying, whoops, probably $10,000 maybe.
Barbara, on all those six bridges, it seems like minor stuff that we could do. I mean, painting, replacing bolts. There are some things that we can't do.
Right.
Should just put them out the bid.
Well, what I'm asking is, if we can just put it out to bid for one company to do all of this.
Well, it depends on what are we doing and what are they doing? We can't put.
Well, I already said, like, you know, Judge Bridge, down, Judge Bridge. We have over Lebanon Brook, then we have Judge Bridge. And I said, I asked our guys to go down there today and take all the vegetation off of all the corners of that bridge. And that they need to go around and do that on all the bridges. They should be keeping that up.
I agree. And the trees, the trees at Wellers Bridge, that could be removed by the town.
The what?
The trees that are in the river, yeah. So we should do all of what we could do, and then figure out what's left and bid that out. And I agree, one company is gonna be cheaper. Absolutely.
Can I ask a couple of questions?
Absolutely.
First question, the Squire Road Bridge and the Painter Hill Bridge.
Okay, now those were added after my conversation with him. Because these are, these are two culverts.
How did they miss out being part of the original six?
Because these are, these are big bridges. Those are two culverts that are, these are the federal bridges that were listed, and we said to go do them.
Painter Hill and Squire Road are federal bridges?
No, 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 they were not. And so.
I was, my question was, why weren't the Painter Hill and Federal Road part of the original six for $1,500 each?
Because they are not.
They're not, they're not.
A bridge.
They weren't on a list.
Minor Bridge, Wellers Bridge.
Because they're far worse than anything of these six.
Right, and they're not on any list, which is nobody's fault.
So we had to pay them to come back and do them for assessment for more money.
No, no, no. First of all, the six that we asked are the six, are six federal bridges. And they're the big bridges over 20 feet. Wellers, Jugs.
Of them.
Excuse me?
Not all six. Lendavig Brook isn't that, is it?
Uh.
There's, there's little ones here.
Well, let me, first of all, I think we should discuss the six and what I just said.
Yep.
And then move on.
I was, I was really quite taken by Judge Bridge. When I see a picture of a scrape and a picture of a scratch, and we had to pay $1,500 to show a picture of vegetation. We didn't need their assessment for that, and that scrape.
Originally.
Well, we agreed, we agreed to it, Jim, for them to look at it, you know? I mean, basically, they're saying there's minor stuff that needs to be done. And what I just said was, before we move on, because there's, there's other things.
That's $20,000 minor.
Well, no, no, we, we're not approving that. We should do what we could do on our own.
They're taking us for a.
Right? Do what we could do on our own, and then whatever we can't do, put out the bid. But I, I'm looking, I'm with you, Jim. I hear you.
Wait a minute, but just wait. Going back, these bridges were all done by the state. And the state came and said that the abutments on that bridge, one side, were faulty.
And these guys didn't put that.
And these guys said they're fine. Because I specifically said, we sent you out there because of this. And he said, and I said, the other thing was, one of these boards, or two of the boards in the center of the bridge were sticking straight up. And I just went and had the guys screw them back down. But, so they're not even in that picture because we got to it before that. But they went and, because the state said the abutments on that bridge were, were not right. And I couldn't believe it because the bridge is not that old. And they said, there's really nothing wrong with that. So that's why they went out there. Because of the, the abutments underneath on the side.
So, so for the six bridges, I'd like to agree or disagree that we, the town should do what we could do because a lot of it is fixing bolts, fixing, removing vegetation, and whatever we decide can't be done. For example, Minor Bridge Road, have we done the, we need to, I forget the term, where the joints are. We need to redo the joints because the joints are leaking. And we can't do that ourselves. We need.
Correct.
Right, so I agree with Barbara. All the things we can't do, we should hire one company to do.
Yep.
So moving on to Squire Road and Painter Ridge Road, or Painter Brook, I forget which one.
Painter Hill.
Painter Hill. They weren't on a list, Jim. That's nobody's fault. They were, they're not on our list. They're not on the state list. They're not state bridges. They're our bridges. I'm looking at the pictures. I see one squashed culvert.
Well, this, this thing just fell. I mean, these two, Squire Road just totally crumbled, just recently. And so when I was seeing.
Is this at the intersection with South Street? Is that the one we're talking about? Okay.
And the other one is Painter Hill near the, near Rainy Hill, the intersection with 317. That's another one. And I actually was appalled to see what the inside of that looked like because I was out there with our guys, and we said we had to clean that up. Maybe it was from the storm because it looks a lot worse. But those two, those two need some help. And so I asked Tim, when he was here with me, if he would go and look at those two and tell me what he thought, because I did not look at Squire Road myself. And this is what he came back with. And he gave us the pictures, and he said, these are a problem. So, um, I would like to, I mean, now that we know that they're a problem, we can either not hire him to do any more work and just put it out to bid to have somebody go and fix this. But there's nothing on the bottom.
How do we know what to fix if you don't have an engineer?
Right.
To me, the whole thing needs replacement with a culvert.
Yeah.
Everything's gotta go.
You need an engineer for that, correct?
Well, they've already.
So he gave us a proposal. He gave us a proposal, which I gave to you here today because he sent it back to me. And he said, they are in severe condition, which they are.
Right.
And he said, the head walls are, and the corrugated metal pipes have pretty much rusted through. I don't know that if there is such a thing as a rehab.
No, it would be stupid to rehab that.
I know.
I mean, the pipe, the pipes crushed.
Russ, the, the cost of the engineer report, the.
Yeah, I read everything. I did.
I guess, just got mine tonight. When did you get yours?
Well, because I just got it today because he, this all just happened, and that's why I wanted to add it.
Russ didn't see Painter Hill and Squire Road.
I did.
Yeah, I sent it to him.
Yeah.
I said, I just printed it for you, but I sent it to him also.
I think that the engineering should go out the bid. That's my opinion. That's the first step. Anybody disagrees because of time, I'm with you. I hear you. I'm just throwing that out there.
Okay, well, I mean, we did, we kind of went through this with the last thing that they already went out to bid through the cog.
No, I, I get that, Barbara, but this is specific to projects, two specific projects.
Okay.
If Jim feels we don't need to bid them, I'm comfortable not sticking with Cardinal. I just want a consensus.
No, I'm all for putting it out to bid because I think the 17,000 is pretty steep.
Well, the 17 includes going.
For two, is it 17 for two?
Each.
No.
Oh, so $34,000, so it's over $20,000. I mean, under our own guidelines, we have to bid that out.
Each grade is 17.
Yeah, so we have to bid it out.
Does include going for the local bridge money, which we're still waiting on everything that I've put the grants in for. The state has just, who knows what they're supposed to get. They're supposed to have some answers.
So do you, do you need approval to go ahead and go for a grant? Because we don't need to pick an engineer.
I need information to go to a, for a grant. That's why I could write the other.
Well, you have information. They're screwed. They're screwed. Both bridges are screwed. We have to replace them.
An engineer's report and study.
Ah, yeah. Well, I think we should bid them. They're over 20, Barbara. It's $34,000. We should bid it. Just make sure.
Okay.
That's my feeling. I'm not saying I'm right or wrong.
All right. Okay, that's just more time, but I would.
I know, but they've been there that long. Nobody's gonna be fixing this, this winter. Let's get it done. Let's put the bid out.
Yep. Easier said than done, but I will.
I'll help you. I'll help you.
All right, so what are we doing with the, so the other one, we've already decided on? That we are going to look at what we can do on all of them. And then we're gonna put this whole package out because these are small repairs. And we're gonna end up paying for all of them out of town aid road money.
Right, so we have one bid to do what we can't do on the six federal bridges. And we have another for engineering services related to Painter, Painter Hill and Squire Road.
Yeah.
I think that's how we structure it.
Yep.
So we get the town crew out, do, here's a list, whatever you can't do, let us know. But they could put nuts and bolts together and other things, clear vegetation.
Yep.
Remove the trees from the river.
Let's patch that scrape on Judge Bridge.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, a little paint, little spray paint here and there, rusted bolt, spray paint it. You know, it's not, good idea not to leave that the way it is because it will get worse.
Yeah, it'll get worse.
Yeah, and that'll be big money.
All right.
All right.
So I think we got what I need.
Okay. I, I got to 8:15 because the, Jim, the reason why I have to leave, I'm wetlands enforcement officer in Bridgewater. And we've had three notice of violations this month, first time in like three years. And they gotta have me there. So they moved their meeting up to eight o'clock. But I have 15 more minutes because they have things that, she told me 8:15 would be fine.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, so then let's jump back up to the regular agenda. All right.
Okay.
We did the Tax Collectors Report. You accepted that, okay. Any communications with the public? I still don't know who's on the phone with 508. Your telephone number, 508-954-4792. Are you here to speak?
That's me, Lance Reynolds, from the Republican American Newsaper.
Oh, okay, hi Lance.
What are you doing in New York?
I'm, I'm, I'm from Massachusetts. That's why I have a 508 number.
Oh, okay. All right, we'll forgive you.
All right, so we have appointments. The Roxbury Museum Board of Trustees. I would like to make a motion to appoint Vicki Culver to that position.
So moved.
I'm on it. Can I second that?
Okay, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, ZBA alternate. This is a guy that I'm actually going to put on two separate things. One is ZBA as an alternate. There's a vacancy. It expires in 2021. His name is Steve Meyer, M-E-I-E-R. Nice guy spoke to Nanette. But I also had him speak to the, for the library board. And there's an opening for the library trustee. And they, they thought he was great. And he said he would be willing to serve, especially because Nanette told him that there is not always a lot going on in ZBA. But that was his first love, actually. So if you don't mind that we appoint Steve Meyer to, as an alternate on ZBA, and also as a library trustee.
I, I make that motion. How hard are we?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we have an inland wetlands alternate vacancy position.
I'll step down.
And Russ is stepping down.
We're all staying.
To appoint Lenora Pilatnick.
Make that motion to appoint Lenora Pilatnick.
Okay.
To term of August 31st, or two.
The vacancy expires.
Vacancy, oh, expires. Vacancy, oh expires 8/31/2022.
Right. So, so Russ, if she gets sworn in, she can go to the public hearing?
Yeah, but you need to second it and then approve it. Yes.
Second.
She needs to, yeah.
All favor? Aye.
Staying.
We have the senior center board of directors. It's filling a vacancy there. Now Virginia Mavulli, I'd make a motion to approve appointing Virginia Mavulli to that vacancy.
I'm moved.
Second.
Second. All favor?
Aye.
Okay, we have two on recreation. One is to fill the vacancy of Rob Hibbert, who we recognized, I believe, last month. Oh, no, we didn't have it last month. So I want to thank Rob for all of his time on the board.
Rob's great. Love Rob and can't thank him enough.
And Fred Bond. Fred Bond, he, because he moved out of town, so he also resigned. So there's two openings on a recreation commission.
Why, why did Rob quit?
Just.
He did it a lot of years, I know.
Yeah.
Sometimes I don't blame.
I'm actually ordering him a plate.
All right, good.
For his 10 years, 10 years spent on.
I just wondered if he gave a reason.
Well, his kids are grown now.
Yeah.
So. Um, anyway.
Anybody mind?
There's a lot going on in the COVID thing. And yes, he did. And I believe I gave you the letter last time, but I'll give it to you again. So anyway, I, so two people are interested, so I need a motion. Sarah Foreman and Lauren Lord are interested in getting on.
I make a motion to approve Sarah and Lauren.
Sarah was on the report, correct?
Yep, she was on the report before.
Yeah.
Someone said, well, I thought you didn't put husband and wife on because Mike is on that. And I said, well, we shy away from doing that on land use boards. But this is, this is different.
It's different. You could get into legal stuff with, on wetlands and zoning with a husband and wife. It's been proven.
Okay, so somebody made a motion, somebody second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and then I put a list of all the guys from the Lake Lilinona Marine Constables. I know we keep going back and forth with this. It's our own or it's the Marine Constables. But we never, now the season's over. We never did formally appoint this list of people that I gave to you.
I'll make a motion to formally appoint the list that was provided.
Second.
Okay, all favor?
Aye.
Okay. Um, Maple, well, if Russ, if you're going to leave, I think I'd like to just jump down to the Shepog River.
Yes, thank you. I, I read the report from Edwin Matthews and I thank Edwin for staying on this. He's a saint. He really is. And the report indicates that Waterbury is not meeting their obligations under the court order. For example, for 343 days over three years, they failed to put the water in a Shepog River that was required. On many days, on many days, they actually diverted water to the Pitch Reservoir when the, through a tunnel, when the Pitch Reservoir was overflowing. So there'd be no reason to do what they're doing. What I believe it is, is Waterbury's not paying attention at all to the court order. And I agree with Ed Matthews of the Shepog River Association. Let's not get heavy handed here. If there's a new superintendent, seems like a good guy, seems like he wants to do the right thing. Let's, let's give them a chance to prove to us that they're going to follow the obligations of the court order or we're going to have to go back to court. Now, we did agree to pay $1,200 for the study that showed that Waterbury's not meeting their obligations. And Barbara, I'm glad to see you emailed Ed that you need an invoice. Obviously you can't just send it.
We got that. We did get it.
So there's no, there's no objection there unless Jim, I'm sure you don't have an objection. We paid 1,200, a bunch of groups paid certain shares to pay for the study, which showed they're not, they're not doing what they should do. And although we're in a drought and I get that, and there are things in the contract where if there's a drought, they could cut back, so on and so forth. But this did not occur during this drought. This occurred all along. They're diverting water and putting it in the reservoirs that are overflowing. And it's shameful, in my opinion.
And who tells them that?
It's going to be the Shepog River Association. But I agree with them. They want to work with them right now and I'm, I'm in agreement with working with them. Not, not getting nasty right off the bat. The mayor of Waterbury is a good, I think he's a good guy. I really do.
Yeah.
And Barbara, I'm sure, you sure he's a much better mayor than a pedophile that they had while we were going through this. And sad, but it's true. And, but I think the mayor of Waterbury is a good man. And I think this could be resolved like reasonable people, which it should have been all along from day one. But unfortunately their mayor was, was not a good man. So that's where we're at.
Yep. And we did, we got the invoice. We got the report and everything. And I mean, this has really been going on between 2016 and 2019.
Right, right.
It just happened the other day.
But, but thanks to Ed, Edwin Matthews for keeping up on this. Cause if we weren't watching, we wouldn't know.
No.
And it's an important, it's, it's the most important resource in our town.
Yep. Okay. So that was really just a report. I mean, if you wanted to vote on paying that $1,200 to, it's called GKY. We can certainly do that.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to pay, to pay the $1,200 for the study.
Yeah. I'll second.
Okay, all favor?
Aye.
Okay. Um, Maple Bank Farm is next. I know that.
Yay. Great thing, great thing.
They have, you know, it, the farm is protected forever over 51%. The, you know, that means that the farm stand is going to be there. They are, they have a conservation easement with, and that is exactly what it means. That the farm will stay an agricultural property forever and it will not be able to be sold for development. So we're going to congratulate. I know I, they asked me for a quote. I gave, I did give a quote to the newspapers, et cetera. The, boy, I can't think of Leontikon's new name.
Northwest Conservation. Yeah.
Conservancy.
Right. Great, great job.
They are, they, they have produced something and have asked me if I can get it out there. So I certainly will do that. I'll get the link out so that people can see that. I already did post something on our Facebook page, couple of times, the town's Facebook page. But they were going to have, you both were going to be going to an event.
Right.
Obviously that fell through and I appreciate that you were going to do that. I don't think that they will be having any event for it, which is too bad because it sure should be celebrated by the public. But COVID took care of that.
Maybe someday.
Yeah, maybe, maybe someday. So thank you to Kathy and Howie for their foresight.
Yep.
Um, okay, I have the AT&T Tower here on South Berry Road. I probably also should have put just Lower County Road. They're both put in applications to the Siding Council to just upgrade, you know, antennas, et cetera. It's really just to report that, that's all. There's not going to be anything that's going to be noticeable on there. But I just wanted you to know about that.
Okay.
Okay. COVID-19 updates. So the town hall is still operating as it has been and our meetings are as they still are on Zoom, et cetera. Town hall is by appointment. And I mean, everyone's doing what they're supposed to be doing. And I think it's, it's going well. I don't have complaints from the public. And if they're complaining to other departments, I haven't heard about them. Things are, I think, going along very smoothly. And everybody's taking care of business. The other thing is the senior center, we talked about that. I don't know when the senior center is going to open again. But for example, there are certain things that we are working with the health department. For example, today they had a soup's on to go program. And 61 people drove by and they served soup and sandwiches and everything to them that were all prepackaged.
Great.
For. So they're going to do that every Tuesday that they can. And it's a, it's always been a fundraiser with the friends of the senior center. We're going to be seeing, talking with the director and Carolyn, really trying to get more things out there for our people. There's, there's, you know, exercise programs and like I said, you know, art classes and some educational things. So we are working on that and getting, just getting more for the people that are in town that will use Zoom. So Halloween, okay, the rec commission, speaking of the rec commission.
Hey Barb, I have to leave, but thank you. Thank you for, for understanding and Jim, I appreciate it.
All right.
We'll see you soon.
Thanks a lot, Lance. See you.
Um, so Halloween, PTO is not having their party at the school this year. But the Recreation Commission is going to have a movie out in the field at the park. And it's going to, so they're still collecting candy and they are going to package it up and they're going to give it to people. And people have to stay in their cars. And it's the, what, the night before, not the night before Christmas. What, let me see, what, what is that movie? It is Halloween, the nightmare before Christmas. And that's a, it's a Halloween thing. So the other thing that's going on is that there's going to be trunk or treat drive-through at the library. So I know that people on South Street are asking, is there going to be Halloween? Are we collecting candy for that? I, I think I need to get something out to say no. I mean, we, we are not going to be sponsoring anything. If people are going to attempt to take their kids trick or treating, I don't know that their houses are going to be open. Or we just say, there won't be any trick or treating on South Street. These are the things that we're going to be doing. We're having a movie and trunk or treat beforehand. Then drive through on the, the library and then go over to the park. The, 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 the library, Teresa, she has a, an event and it's called Story Walk on Joey's Trail. And it's Saturday, October 7th, 17th. The 17th from 6 to 8. And they are going to walk through Joey's Trail and they're going to have a story and the kids have to bring a flashlight. They have to be accompanied by an adult. And that's, that's something that they can do. It's a nighttime Halloween story walk. So unless you think we should be having Halloween, what's been traditional here, that's what we're going to offer. And I will let the people on South Street know. Would you agree with that, Jim, or?
Yes, totally.
And I will, I will let people know that. And also I've got a lot of requests for the tractor parade. I know, I think the rec commission is meeting, well, they are going to meet. And there cannot be the tractor parade as it was, obviously, with the food and everything else. But I mean, how do you feel about just having a tractor parade? People go up and down the road. I don't know. I don't, they can't, they can't stop at the park and they can't picnic there and they can't do a lot.
Sounds like you might be opening a door for group, large groups to gather and drop their guard and forget what's really going on.
Yeah, yeah. We have seen a little increase in our town, but as, as most towns have. We have no one that's in the hospital, but a couple of more people that have tested positive. So I think that we just keep doing what we're doing. And you know, the rec commission, their, their first movie night was very successful and they, you know, were able to contain people. They stayed in their cars.
Yeah.
So, I mean, it's getting cold and they're not going to be able to be doing that very much. But we don't know how long this is going to go on. But it is what it is. And I know the kids are all in school together. So you say, well then why can't they go out? But you know what? They can do whatever they want on their own, but the town is not going to promote it. I think that's what our stand is.
Correct.
Okay. Squire Road, the people on Squire Road met with Matt Bell and myself. As complaints on other roads is speeding and speeding cars and trucks. It is a no through truck road. And as I, they thought it meant that there was no trucks allowed. And I said, no, that's not true. If they are going anywhere in town and stopping, they are allowed to use the road. And yes, unfortunately it is a cut through road. So for speeding, I told them that we would change the 30 mile an hour speed signs to bigger signs. We will also, we're working on changing and getting to Google with the GPS maps. I know someone that did this over on Schoolhouse to try and get it redirected that the trucks were not going up Schoolhouse and staying on Topit. So we're going to try and get that done for Squire. Because it's just throwing the trucks onto Squire Road. And we'll see how that works out. Changing the signs and tomorrow, actually, the guys need to get the big, the big sign that we have, the big orange sign. We are going to put it out on Squire Road on 67. But it's going to be, you know, the same, at the same angle that the street sign is. And it's just going to say absolutely no through trucks. Maybe change the no through truck signs to the very beginning of the road because they're in a little bit. And if you turn, it's too late, you know, a truck can't turn around. They would like to see speed bumps. I don't think we're going to be doing that. They wanted a stop sign at the intersection of Apple Lane. And I said, you know, I could do that. But you know, thinking about it, I don't know if that's such a great idea. In the beginning, that people are just going to be screeching, stop there. It's, you know, half, a little bit maybe halfway down into Squire Road. And if they're not used, and they're not going to be used to it. And we have to put more signage up to say stop sign ahead. I think signs are litter because people don't read them anyway. So what do you think about putting signs up?
Totally agree because most of the stop signs at, on Weller's Bridge and Rocky Mountain, they know that they're there and they don't stop.
Right, right.
So stop sign really isn't going to slow any, they might pause a bit, but they're going to go right through it anyway. I've always been against speed bumps because of emergency vehicles and what have you. But somebody brought it to my attention, the speed bumps that are used in New Melford on Main Street, they're real.
Oh, the humps, they're, they're humps, yeah.
Oh, they're low. I mean, I didn't, you don't even see them. I've hit them doing 25 or 30 and yeah, it'll jar you, but they're very low. And they've been on Main Street there, the one direction going.
Yeah.
For many years. And a few of those in front of these stop signs might get somebody's attention and it won't slow down an emergency vehicle. Really, I don't think. It's a very gradual speed bump.
Right. Um, no, I know exactly what you're talking about. They have those in other countries, actually. I've taken pictures of them.
They take, it'll take the whole town to agree on something like that. We just can't really go do it because there's going to be a lot of people opposed to them.
Right. Well, and some of the people that are driving the emergency vehicles are, are opposed to them. And so are plow drivers. But.
Well, they plow that Main Street in the middle. I don't know, it's been there for a lot of years.
Yep. So what are you suggesting? You try and put something like that on Squire or at the stop signs on Weller's?
Yeah. My road, Rocky Mountain and Weller's.
But I mean, also on Squire because they got to be built, they got to have four signs around them. This is where the litter comes in.
Oh, yeah. It's, it's tough. I mean, people are speeding all over town.
Yeah, they are.
Any road. And once we start trying to do something for one road, you're going to, all the people are going to want it done for Painter Hill, Painter Ridge, Gold Mine, Topit. And it's, it's.
We have a new speed. We have a new speed sign, and it's been out, that's on Squire right now, actually. And, um, it was up on Botzberg, and, uh, the problem is, is that we don't have the resources to babysit a road, and that's basically what needs to happen.
I, I tell you, I don't think signage, or speed bumps, or stop signs, I think, uh, uh, it's a tough situation, and speed limit 25 or 30, and patrol when we can, and hopefully, everybody lives through it, because they speed daily.
Well, I already told Matt, our resident trooper, I said, you gotta start getting two guys working at a time, you know, so that they can work together, you know, to try and get some of these speeders. They, um, you know, we have, I have Bill Cario, and he sits out front here. We have these trucks, these dump trucks that go flying by here, and when he's there, you can see they're going 30, 35, but when he leaves, you know, I can see them, they just go back and forth between New Milford and Southbury all day long, and these guys are flying, some of them are, anyway. So anyway, I'm, we're gonna try a couple of things and see if we can help them out. But, uh, they thought their trucks were not allowed on that road, and I said, absolutely not.
No, I think the speed machine, have that speed machine out daily.
Yeah, it's been there, it'll be there another week.
I mean, then move it to another road.
Yeah.
And, uh, that might make them think that we're watching.
Well, the other thing is, is that we are, we're figuring it out, but it is, it's capable to register speeds. So we will be able to see really what people are doing.
And it gives, I talked to Bill about it, it gives the date and the time of day.
Yeah.
So then he can go back up there and watch for the little black Honda that goes flying down Botzberg Hill
Right.
at a certain time, and that's very helpful, that's, that's a tool.
Yep.
It'll work.
Yeah. Okay, let me see, what else I got here? Well, we have the, um, jumped all over, so I just wanna make sure I got everything here. Okay, so we're gonna have that town meeting on October the 20th, I'll set that up. And, um, the Fire Marshal and the Resident Trooper reports, I have those that were in your packet. So I can just accept those.
Move to accept.
And, uh, so, um, second, all in favor?
Aye.
I did want to make one correction on the agenda. The, it said, um, backup with the approval of the minutes, it says regular meeting, but August 18th was actually a special meeting, because we had to postpone it. And, uh, so I just need to make that correction, it was a special meeting, not a regular meeting.
Correct.
Okay, alright, so I don't know, do you have any, um, anything else to bring up?
No, I'm good.
Questions?
I, I'm, excuse me for a minute, on my agenda, um,
Wait a minute, you traded out, Julie.
Okay, I still, um, I've got, it looks like
Oh, my goodness. You know what? Holy smokes, what I'm looking at, I'm, you know what, I'm looking through on the chat. Oh, my goodness, I'm so glad you said that. Jim, do you, okay, I had Maple Bank, Cardinal Engineering, COVID updates, okay, the EverSource and the storm response.
Yes.
Oh, okay, I, I'm sorry, I was looking at my, something that I had started, and I didn't finish. So, thank you, Julie. So EverSource and the storm response, um, right now, you know, the legislature is dealing with, um, EverSource, because there's so many complaints about their non-response in these last two storms. Their total failure, basically. So, um, I also have a meeting set up with, uh, the person that is our liaison, and other people higher up in EverSource, they're trying to get to every single town, and it's just, you know, beating a dead horse, because we've all told them exactly, um, what went, what, you know, what didn't happen and should have happened. And the question is, like, where were they, and why did we have to fight and try and find out where they were? They didn't follow their own plan. So anyway, we do have a meeting set up, and I'll let you know where it goes, but the legislature's leaning pretty hard on them right now. We'll just have to see what happens with that. Um, Household Hazardous Waste Day was this, uh, past Saturday. I don't know the numbers that went there from Roxbury, uh, because it was just on Saturday, but I will get those. And, um, there were plenty of people, there were plenty of people there, so I hope it was successful, and we brought a bunch of stuff over ourselves from the town. Um, our hazard mitigation plan is something that we did several years ago, and it needs to be updated, and we are, uh, I've already sat through two, uh, meetings trying to get our, our plan updated. And, um, it's with help through the CAG, and the CAG is actually paying for the towns that need it. Um, they want us to have this, because it's supposed to be so advantageous for us when we're applying for grants, but I reminded them that it didn't help us one bit with some of the grants that we went for, for the local bridge program, et cetera. However, we will have a good updated plan. Um, so we already covered the Shippod River grants. So they did put the STEEP grants, uh, the STEEP grant in, and our local bridge, uh, grants, and, um, they just keep going later and later, but they do anticipate that they will award the STEEP grants sometime, uh, the week of October 15th. So I've got to keep, keep it on fingers crossed. Now, the local bridge, I, I don't have, um, I don't have when they're gonna get that. And the problem is, and that's, you know, we really want to get going on Davenport. And you can get all the material and everything ready for that, uh, paper-wise, but if you start any construction, and then your grant comes through, they won't give it to you. So we can go through the winter the way we are, because we did do that fix on it, and we're gonna have to anyway, because even if we get awarded, we're, it's too late to start that. No, we'll look forward to trying to do that in the spring. But I'm, I keep, you know, calling, just to keep our, our town's name out there for them, to remind them how important it is for that and Botzberg.
Correct.
So, um, keeping our fingers crossed, I, I just hope it comes through, they come through. The elections, um, you know what? The, the town clerk's office, the registrar, she's in a lot, and, um, everybody's, the ballots that were mailed out, everybody that requested a ballot, they were mailed out on October 2nd, and, um, they're being received, and they're also, uh, coming back as we speak. So I guess almost half, or a little more than half of the people are registered for absentee ballots. So we shouldn't have a whole lot of
In-person voting is the same hours, 6 to 8?
Yes.
Yeah.
6:00 AM to 8:00 PM. And so they have people to work, and they have people to, I mean, and they're gonna be cleaning and everything else, but like I said, half the voters are already gonna be voting absentee, so that, that'll be easier. Whoops. Okay. Uh, speeding enforcement, that goes back to, um, just what I talked about, we have a new speed machine, and it's out there, and I have requested the resident trooper to have two of our guys work at the same time at some point. We had, um, we had mailboxes destroyed, uh, this weekend, and unfortunately, we didn't have anybody working on Saturday, but now, uh, we're back to having somebody on Saturday nights, because we're gonna need that. But you know what? If you're not on the road that it's happening on, it's hard to catch. Hard to catch. Um, so anyway, Julie, do I have anything else?
No, that was the last I could see.
I'm glad that you said that, oh my gosh. I don't have anything else then, Jim.
Uh, motion to adjourn.
Okay, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Thank you for, thanks, Julie.
No, thank you.
Okay.
8:33?
Oh.
8:30?
It all depends what I live on, iPhone or computer. It's 8:30.
8:30, okay. Oh, thank you, alright, we're, we're good.
How do I get out of here? I am going to end.